How are you?
I'm good.
Good, we're trying to get our volume turned up.
Okay.
Okay. Unless you want to stay. If you want to stay, you more than well.
Good morning, everyone. Councilor Donald, we are officially recording and you can start your meeting. You can call, call the meeting to order.
Ms. Wanda, can you hear me now?
I can hear you good.
Thank you, thank you. As soon as we get a quorum, we can go ahead and start.
Okay, you do have a quorum.
Whenever you tell me to start, we'll be ready.
I didn't, I didn't hear roll call.
Well, we can call the meeting to order, we are officially recording, you didn't hear me when I said that before.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Taylor, I did not hear you when you said the meeting was officially called to order. Welcome to the City of Bessemer City Council Meeting, seventeen hundred third Avenue North, Bessemer, Alabama, three five zero two zero. Today's Tuesday, February the second, twenty twenty one. You have a printed agenda, this meeting has been called to order. Item number two, Ms. Taylor.
Invocation.
We have this morning Pastor Barry, Barry Casper. One of our very prominent pastors, you can step right to the podium, Pastor Casper, here in the city of Bessemer that I enjoy working with as we distribute food to the citizens all over Jefferson, Shelby and Tuscaloosa Counties. Pastor Casper is coming to the podium now, he decided that he wanted to come in this morning and to render prayer here in the city hall. And I thought that was a wonderful idea. Just one moment and we will have Pastor Casper's computer up and ready. Pastor Casper.
Good business, Donald, and thank you for your outstanding leadership. And thank you for the cooperative effort in the food distribution. Can you imagine how many people were blessed through that experience? Let's pray together. Father, I just want to thank you. Thank you for your love that is so indescribable. Your love that is so abundant. Your love that is so compassionate. And Father, as a result of receiving that love, then we share that love with each other. And Father, we come together as individuals, we come together to work together collectively, liberatively. And then, Father, our responsibility as leaders and community, as Christians, is to make sure that others are equally blessed. Father, I pray your special blessings upon the city council. Pray for Mrs. Donald and her leadership. Every one of the council members, and I pray your special wisdom for them. And then also the vision to be able to see what you desire to bless the Bessemer area with. And then, Father, that many will be blessed. We pray for Mrs. Alexander today in the aspect of her injury. And but we pray Philippians four nineteen for her that all of her needs will be met according to your riches and glory by Christ Jesus. Then, Father, we pray for the people in Fultondale and that you'll continue to minister to them. Father, we pray for the Bessemer community, the Bessemer cut off. And Father, that there will be exemplary blessings that will be bestowed. And Father, that will be shared. And then, Father, we pray for our nation. We pray, Father, that you would bless not only our nation, but also Bessemer. And, Father, every state of our country, but also every country throughout the world that you would bless with revival and spiritual awakening. But, Father, we thank you for the day that you have given to us. Now we commit ourselves afresh, live for you unconditionally, unashamedly and unsavagely. Forgive us of our every sin, and I pray it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Casper. We know that you're the chaplain for Alabama Disaster Relief and you have to leave and, and go out to Center Point and Fultondale. We thank you for just taking the time to stop by and pray with the city of Bessemer. We pray for Fultondale, Gardendale and Center Point and all that's involved. We pray for Representative Louise Alexander here, State Representative Alexander here in District fifty six. As she had an accident and we pray for a speedy recovery. Pray that all is well with her. Item number three, Ms. Taylor.
Council roll call. Councilor Alexander. Councilor Carter.
Present.
Councilor Crusoe.
Present.
Councilor Marshall.
Present.
Councilor Dick Pan.
Present.
Councilor Matthews.
Present.
Councilor Donald.
Present.
Seven present, no absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you, item number four, please.
Approval of minutes from December fifteen, twenty twenty and January fifth, twenty twenty one.
Counselors, you have read the minutes. Are there any concerns and or questions concerning the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a, this is Councilor Crusoe, I do have a concern as it relates to the minutes. I would ask that our clerk, Ms. Wanda Taylor, if you will, can you be just a, I guess, a little more detailed i- in the minutes as to, I guess, you know, the statements that that's being made in the, in council meeting?
Okay.
In reviewing the minutes, I mean, not just these, but even some before, just asking that we go a little more in depth as to what the, more so as what the counselors are saying. At, you know, or statements as being made, you know, by counselors i- in the minutes, if it's not a problem.
Okay, well, I review it and then I get with you on that to, to get a clear understanding of what you're saying. So I, but I review it and get with you.
Not a problem at all, thank you so much for your time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, counselor.
I've seen something as well in the minutes. In the minutes it said, Councilor Alexander stated that Dr. Harkin said that social media is an outlet to inform the citizens of what's taking place in their city. And with that being said, what is the status on the Facebook account? And then it said Mayor Gully stated that he will reach out to his IT director, Mr. Rick Singleton. And I remember Rick coming on saying that he had to the end of January, at least till February the second to get this done, and I don't see that in the minutes.
Okay, well, we're, I think they can review that. And that, what, what date was that? That was a Jan, we got January fifth and December fifteenth.
Was that?
It was January the fifth.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, just to kind of piggyback on what was just mentioned and hopefully at the planning session, we will have something on, on that comment that, that Councilor Alexander just made mention. Make a note, I'm making a note of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion, Counselors, and a second. To accept the minutes.
Madam Chair. I'm motioning that we accept the minutes for the January the fifth, twenty twenty one and December fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Need a second, please.
Okay.
It has been motioned and seconded that we'll accept the minutes with possible changes for December the fifteenth, twenty twenty and January the fifth, two thousand and twenty one. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Councilor Alexander.
Aye.
Councilor Carter.
Aye.
Councilor Crusoe.
Aye.
Councilor Marshall.
Aye.
Councilor Dick Pan.
Aye.
Councilor Matthews.
Aye.
Councilor Donald.
Aye.
As the motion carries.
Thank you, I too have some notes written down, Ms. Taylor, but we'll, I'll get with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Item number five, please.
Committee reports.
Counselors, are there any committee reports? If not, item number six. Item number six, please.
Presentations, awards, announcements and recognitions.
Mayor Gully, are you on? Mayor Gully, are you on the line? Okay, we'll move on until Mayor Gully has gotten on the line. Item number seven, please.
Emmett.
And Councilor Alexander.
Attorney Harris, do you want to speak for that effect?
Your, your computer is on, Attorney Harris.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, they can hear you.
You got to mute your, your mic, Councilor Donald.
Thank you. Now you know who you're talking to. Okay, there we go. Go ahead, Attorney.
Excuse me, his mic is unm, his mic is muted. One moment. We're getting a lot of feedback from the council this.
The guest's mic needs to be turned back off.
Yes, my, yes, my call. One moment, Counselor.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Councilor Alexander, can you hear him? Okay.
Okay, what's the question, I'm sorry, and, and you asked me, it's a matter. Of course, well, as you know, the last thing that I believe that occurred on this was the, we can notice at last meeting of the mayor's veto of the resolution which authorized the issuance of a request for RFPs. That means the resolution was authorizing the council to go forward with, with inviting folks to apply to tell us what, you know, for that service. But that was, in my opinion, that was not a, a resolution of, of permanent operation. And therefore, I don't think it was actually vetoable. Therefore, you didn't have to override the veto because I don't think it was, in my opinion, it wasn't a matter of permanent operation. Merely an invitation.
Thank you, Attorney Harris. Item number.
Well, well, Ma- Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't, I don't think that, that should be just a.
Hold on, Councilor Matthews, I can't, you tell us. Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, I heard, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Matthews.
Excuse me, Madam President, you got your mic off and Greg has his on, he needs to turn his mic off so you can turn yours on.
Okay, wait, turn your mic off.
Now, can you hear me now?
Who made?
Okay. Counselor Alexander couldn't hear, I think Greg needs to turn his mic off. Okay, you're muted. Okay. Counselor Matthews.
Well, inasmuch as the Attorney Harris just made that statement. And I guess I'll ask him, so I guess the committee can go ahead and call a committee meeting and move forward with the next step that we, we had. I think that we have left off, and that is doing a date for the, to let the bids, well, for people to, to let it, I guess. That's the next thing. Not to let it, but to, to do the RFP, to send out the date for people to get their proposals back in. And I guess in saying that, am I right, Attorney Harris, we can?
Yeah, I agree with that statement, Counselor, I agree.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Matthews. Item number eight, please.
Update on Facebook Live.
I think Counselor Alexander has already spoken on Facebook Live. Is there anything else, Counselor Alexander, that you needed to say?
Yes, ma'am, I needed to know the status because he was given a deadline. He said by the end of January, at least by the second, which is today, this meeting. Do we have any type of updates as far as the Facebook page being back up?
Has Mayor Gully come on the line? Mr. Singleton, do you feel comfortable answering that question without the mayor on the line?
Madam President.
Good morning, Mayor Gully, I didn't hear you, how are you?
I'm well, good morning to you and the entire council and all who's on the line. Mr. Singleton, yes, if you will, go ahead and get them an update and stuff on Facebook Live. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Gully, Madam President, City Council. Good morning. IT Department submitted to the mayor's office a, the new city's Facebook page. We're waiting for review and changes, we're waiting on the mayor's office to approve so we can push the publish button. And that's where we stand currently.
May I ask a question, Mayor Gully?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, with that Facebook Live, before we push the button to publish, can the city council not review that? That Facebook Live before, because if the council is on there, we may want to change a picture or anything. But is it possible for us to review that before that button is put, the published button is pushed?
Madam President, I have no problems over that whatsoever.
Thank you, Mayor Gully, thank you so much.
I'm, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Counselor.
I'm trying to make sure that we're clear as to your understanding as far as in Facebook Live. Facebook Live is very similar to the Zoom. I mean, it's, yo, as we're having a council meeting, it, rather than it being on YouTube or, it'll be on the, on Facebook. So when you said about the, if, if a council member wanted to change a picture or something like that, so I'm trying to get some clarity as to what, what, where are we, with, how, what type pictures?
No, ma'am, Counselor Crusoe, that was just. Uh, no, ma'am, I understand perfectly, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, I'm just making sure that, you know, we all on the same page. I mean, as far as, you know, and as far as, you know, a clear understanding with Face, with the Facebook Live, that's all. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Counselor Marshall.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mr. Singleton a couple of questions? Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Council Marshall, yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. My, my question, Mr. Singleton, is what control do we have of Facebook Live? My understanding, if you're Facebook Live, that means that anybody in the world can comment, can, can say ugly things toward any of us, can, can, can insert any kind of pictures or, or text. And, 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 and I, I don't, I don't think some of us understand that Bessemer's in the spotlight in terms of the, the, the great things that have been going on in Bessemer. And to hold ourselves out to possibility of some corporate, some corporation looking at Bessemer as a place to be. And then you have Facebook Live and, and people are making all kind of ugly comments and, and all kind of, you know, ugly pictures. As I understand, it could be inserted. Am I, am I incorrect on that, Mr. Singleton? That we have no control of what goes on Facebook Live?
Yes, sir, the only control we have is we can start the stream and stop the stream.
But, but you can't stop comments, you can't stop insertion of pictures or any of that, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so I don't know why we want to hold ourselves out to that. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Cruz, uh, Alexander.
We could still do Zoom, but we could put it on Facebook Live. All other cities are doing it, I don't see what's the problem. I mean, even if, I mean, the public is free to comment, this is a public forum, it's open to the public. And if they do want to insert anything as far as comments, I will welcome it. Whether it's good comments or bad comments, I mean, we all are not good. I mean, we all have done things and we all have flaws. And people all have their opinion of everybody. So, I mean, to get it out to the public as far as putting our Zoom on Facebook Live, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not doing, I'm not saying this so somebody could be mischievous and put pictures or degrade or down, you know, talk about the council people. I'm, I'm saying we need Facebook Live because it's very interactive and most older people I know, they navigate Facebook. They don't know how to navigate YouTube.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Counselor Marshall.
I, I still think the point is, is, is being missed. I mean, the public has an opportunity to view us on YouTube.
You can turn off the comment section, Counsel Marshall, they can turn off the comment section and we can.
Alexander, let him, let him finish.
Mister, Mister Singleton says that we don't have any control of Facebook comments. Now, Mr. Singleton, clear, clear that up, please.
Yes, sir, to my knowledge and from what I've seen and that's said, as I've, I've observed, we have no control. We, we cannot restrict comments or conversations within the stream to Facebook. Now, that, that's not to Zoom, that's not an enter, that's not a direct connection to the council members themselves. That would just be posts and comments made on the news feed or made on, made during, made on the feed during, during the live stream. And this, this is, and that's to my knowledge. I, I know, I'm not aware of any, any button or any setting that we can, we could restrict that conversation.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Crusoe.
Man, my question is, I mean, what is it that we, we're so fearful of? Um, you know, these are the same citizens whose doors we kick in during election time. You, um, some who can't come out of the house in order to come to, to voice their concerns or state their comments to us, in, especially in the course of this pandemic. Even before the pandemic, and we had little to no people showing up for city council meeting. We have far more people being involved and knowing what's going on here in the city of Bessemer since the pandemic and since we take into Zoom. Now, if, if Facebook Live is going to open up the line, I mean, you know, w- w- we can't stop a person from feeling the way that they feel or making whatever type statements that they make. We just want to be much more exposed and accessible to, and convenient as possible to the citizens here in Bessemer. Not just during election time, but during the course of the term that we've, that we've asked them to elect us to.
Madam Chair.
Madam President.
Ms. Dick, Counselor Dick Pan.
I understand what Counselor Marshall is saying and Mr. Singleton. I don't think it's anything to do with our citizens and our constituents watching and getting on Facebook Live. I think it's, it's open to the whole world. We could have somebody from China or Russia or the Middle East or Europe. And they could post sexual pictures, X-rated, they could make derogatory remarks that have nothing to do with our citizens and we are not looking for them to post that kind of thing. We have no control over who gets on there. Uh, with, they don't have to be a member of our page, it can be anyone that could comment and post pictures that would embarrass us all for them being on there.
Okay.
Council President, Madam Chair. I just Google, I'm sorry, can I, can I speak?
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
I just Google Facebook help team. If you turn on quiet mode, it will turn off all the comments and reactions of the broadcast. To do this, you simply swipe the video to the left. It said, I want to turn off my comments when watching a Facebook Live feeding or doing a Facebook Live feeding.
Yes, we can turn it off on ours, I'm sorry, Ms. Madam President, we can turn it off on ours, but we can't turn off what's being broadcast. Everyone's still going to see it, I wouldn't see it if I swiped left. You know, I, it would turn it off and that would, there would be no comments showing. But it's not going to take it off the live feed and everyone else is going to see it that doesn't swipe left on theirs.
Even Fox Six News, when they're in the Birmingham City Council, any news station, when they're going Facebook Live, you have people up under the comments. But it, it hasn't been a, a big deal with, with, with the news. I haven't seen Russia or Iranians or anything put any type of sexual exploit anybody on the news. And I, and they go, Fred, they report them go live all the time.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Counselor Marshall.
You know, I, I'm going to leave it alone, but you know, if you're running at three mile speed, it's hard to get you to understand.
Thank you, Counselor Marshall.
President, I have one question. I have one for Mr. Singleton.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Dick Pan.
Mr. Singleton, you said that we could turn it on and we can turn it off. If something like that pops up, we can cancel the feed, terminate it.
I guess, ma'am, we could counsel the feed and start the feed at will, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, as long as we can do that, you know, if something like that pops up, I would be okay.
Madam Chair, one, one final comment, but, but, but can.
You said your last one was your final.
Well, but I got enough.
Go ahead, Counselor Marshall.
Uh, Mr. Singleton, but does that mean that you're able to stop that feed before it's seen? Or you can cut it after the, the, the scene has gone out, then you can cut it? But it's all. But it's already out there, right?
Uh, yes sir, um, yes sir, I can start, start and stop the feed. And, uh, what's been posted is, will be posted.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I, um, me personally, I watch Birmingham and I watch Jefferson County. I watch Anniston and I watch two or three more, Tuscaloosa. And the concerns that we're worried about now, I, I haven't seen any of them on them. I would welcome anyone to comment. Even if I'm moving at one, uh, not three, one. I would welcome anyone to comment. Because if I'm steering wrong, I would want somebody to comment and steer me back on the, in the right direction. If there's something that we can do to make the city better, and I think Facebook Live alone with YouTube is going to make this city better. Even as I'm sitting here now, I have, um, as a matter of fact, the school board president here in the city of Bessemer who's, um, thanking us for having actual pastors to come in and pray over the city and to pray with us. So I think, uh, Facebook Live along with YouTube will be a great thing for the city of Bessemer. If it does not show favorable for the city of Bessemer, we can all, we can always, we can always terminate. And I thank you, Mr. Singleton, for telling us that we could always terminate. I think Facebook Live is going to be wonderful, Mayor Gully. Mr. Singleton, thank you for, uh, working on this so diligently. And I think our next meeting, uh, will be Facebook Live from what I'm hearing. Thank you, councilors. Item number nine.
Madam President.
Yes sir, Mayor Gully.
Just like, uh, with YouTube, um, there was a, a resolution authorizing, and so YouTube, uh, it will take more than just the next meeting now. I'm, I'm thinking that you all would have to sort of pass a resolution and so allowing and so, uh, cities such as utilize Facebook Live. You know, we debated that early on and YouTube was the, uh, mode that was chosen. I think you will probably need a resolution if you want another.
Yes sir, we'll have one ready on not planning session. Uh, we'll have one ready by planning session, is that correct, Attorney Harris?
That's correct.
We'll have a resolution planned by, um, planning session so that we can sit down and look it over, make the necessary changes and or accept it in the next meeting. Thank you all so much. Item number nine.
Madam President.
Yes sir, Mr. Singleton.
I'm, I'm sorry to interject, um, I, I may have not, I may have not mentioned to the mayor and I'm not really sure, um, the, as we, as, as we did previously, we, we also had to test the page. Uh, the test has not been conducted, I don't see any problems. However, I, I don't feel comfortable saying that we are, 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 um, letting the mayor say that we will be ready until we actually have tested the page. And that's just, just an IT protocol, so we have not tested the page because we have not published the page. So I do want to, uh, uh, deliver the results to the mayor before, before, um, before I had, before I, like the mayor says, says that it's, it's ready to go. We have not tested the page, I want to make you aware of that.
Okay, so, um, can we test the page for planning session? Or the very next meeting? You get those results to the mayor and we'll be ready, uh, say in, in March, first meeting in March?
Uh, once, once terrain, or once the mayor's office has, uh, made the changes, uh, that I'm, that painted, the, the changes to the page and authorized me to publish, then I can test it. I'm not really sure when I'll get the page back, uh, when I get the permission to publish. But as soon as I get permission, I can test it and send the results back to the mayor. Uh, I, I can't give you a date as to when that would, when I could have that until I actually get the permission to publish.
Well, well, we're shooting, um, let us, uh, Mayor Gully, let us shoot for, um, to test the page with, with our next meeting, which will be the, the, um, planning session. We'll test the page there. Yes sir, Council, uh, Matthews.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Singleton, uh, in as much as you communicated, uh, you did the, you, you test the other, another page, uh, YouTube page. What was the time limit, uh, timeframe on that? Uh, what's a normal timeframe on testing, testing period?
Uh, instantaneous, instantaneous, if, if everything is set up on the Facebook page, or for example, on the last Facebook page, we had a 24 hour window because we did not have stream inactivated. So we had to wait 24 hours before we could actually test. So, uh, rough case, rough case would be 24 hours on Facebook. Uh, YouTube was, was, uh, set up previously to stream and I had no issues with YouTube. Um, however, on the last page, we successfully did test Facebook page after a 24 hour period, uh, waiting period, uh, from the, from, from activating the, the live stream.
Okay, well, in as much as you just said 24 hours, then, uh, it's possible that you'd be done with this in, with, uh, before our next planning session.
It's possible. Once again, it's all, it's all based on, um, based on when I get the, when they get the changes back from the mayor's office and permission to publish.
Once you get the changes, what change?
Well, any, any changes, I submitted it, uh, for review, so, um, um, the, the page was created by the IT department, of course, the mayor's office had to approve the changes or approve the page and add what, you know, add what the, add, and make changes to the page. So we're, we're, I anticipate there could be some changes. I'm not really sure if they are, but I don't want to say they're not.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think, I think we're making this thing more complex than really what it is. Or some, some other language that's being used is making it complicated, I, I, I think. But, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing those. Well, I'm serious, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I think, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of language being used to, uh, circumvent the real idea of what we are trying to do. And, uh, you know, and it's some procrastination and long drawn out things that's going on that, 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 that I'm feeling right now, so, uh, I'll wait and hear what's, what be said in, in, in a week's time, okay? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you sir, Councilor Matthews, as I was stating, uh, we can, we can do our test and prayerfully we'll be ready to go. And everything can be, since everybody's in the same building here, we'll be ready to go Facebook Live, the first meeting in March. We will be ready to go Facebook Live, the first meeting in March. Thank you, Mayor Gully, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Item number nine, please.
Request abatement of properties, list attached.
Good morning, Miss, Miss Hall on the line.
Good morning, everyone, I am.
Good morning, Miss Hall, how are you?
I'm well, yourself, thank you.
Good, I seem to always run into you as you're doing your ride. Councilors, have you had the opportunity to see the properties that Miss Hall is asking to be abated? Twenty-two twenty, Miss Hall. Fairfax, is that that house next to the brick house on the corner?
What, I'm sorry, what's your question again?
Twenty-two twenty. You know, there's a brick house on the corner right before you get to 23rd, there's an empty lot. And there's a shotgun house right there. Is that the house we're speaking of?
It's the house that's adjacent to the vacant lot, I think it's white with red trim around it.
Okay. Someone's, if they're not, if, if, if I'm not mistaken, someone's living in that house. That's right down the street from me.
Yes ma'am, I believe, um, the property, um, has been rented out to renters.
Okay, I was going to say, we may have some squatters there. Councilors, you've seen the properties that need to be abated. I need a motion in a second, please. Are there any more questions and or concerns? Need a motion in a second, please. To abate these properties.
Madam President, I move to abate the properties.
Um, second.
Has been properly moved in a second that we abate the properties that Miss Hall has turned in to us. Um, roll call, Miss Taylor.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Corrier.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Bigpen.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Councilors, I need a motion to accept the, uh, report of cost. In a second, please.
Man, item ten.
I'm sorry.
Item ten.
There are some properties. Okay, now I got it. Councilors, you've seen the properties, um, that Miss Hall is asking for a report of cost on. Miss Hall, twenty-one twelve, twenty-one sixteen, Granville Avenue. Are both of those properties condemned?
Yes ma'am, actually, there's a vacant lot, the other structures have been removed on both.
Madam President, do you want to read the item?
Yes ma'am, I'm going to have Miss, um, item number, one more, Miss Hall, twenty-five twelve Arlington Avenue. Is that a burned structure?
I am uncertain if it's burned, but I am certain that it's evaporated, it's the yellow structure in the beam that you turned.
Yes, it was burned on one side.
Okay.
Um, Council Bigpen, do you have a, a, uh, copy of these report of cost?
Yes ma'am, I just thought before, Gus, that you need to have it written to the record.
Yes ma'am, thank you, um. Miss Taylor, will you read the, those into the record, please?
Yes ma'am, item ten, report of cost, list attached.
Thank you ma'am. I just went on talking and I haven't even acknowledged you, Miss Taylor, I'm sorry. Councilors, we had an opportunity to look at your report of cost. Are there any questions and or concerns? If not, I need a motion in a second to accept this.
Madam, Madam President.
Yes ma'am.
Accept the report of cost.
Second.
Has been properly moved and second that we will accept this report of cost for January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, that has been submitted by Miss Hall. Roll call, Miss Taylor.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Corrier.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Bigpen.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eleven, please.
Item eleven is a resolution authorizing longevity payment to employees of the city of Bessemer.
Councilors, we spoke on this on our very last meeting about longevity pay um, from the CARES Act funds for the employees of the city of Bessemer. Now that you've looked over what the, we've had the mayor to go and come back, start with, um, five hundred thousand um, for our employees here in the city of Bessemer. I see what the mayor has here, from zero to nine years, five fifty. From nine and above, is that seven hundred? Councilors, are there any concerns and or questions?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am, Councilor Crusoe.
Um, this is, uh, Council Crusoe, I, um,
I say Council Crusoe.
Yes ma'am, I, um, I'm with my camera not, not being on today, that, I mean, I was just making, you know, statement. I, I'm looking for my name or not. Okay, um, I'm, I read the same, uh, information that you just, um, read off as far as the amounts. I think, uh, uh, after reading it, I just don't want us to get so dumb, I guess, torn or drawn into the, um, tiers as far as in the amount of years. Because, you know, honestly, with all of, um, the different departments being hit with COVID the way that it has, to be honest with you, I mean, I, I think, you know, I mean, uh, a lot of them have been equ- equally exposed. I'm not, not so, I'm, I'm not trying to downplay anyone's position and upgr- upplay, uh, or someone, uh, someone else's. It, it may, it, it's a, it's a chance that we take it individually every day, leave it out of, out of our homes. So, and, um, my suggestion, I mean, th- this is just mine. And, uh, we can go back and forth as council to agree upon it, um, to disagree. That we just, you know, give everybody, uh, um, a thousand dollars across the board. Um, and if you have, have any more, or other tweaks or whatever that we need to do to, um, to that, then, um, you know, as to, you know, minimizing, um, you, I guess, you know, for, for whatever, um, level that, that we want to, um, you know, I, I guess with a, a smaller tier, but for the, for overall, I mean, I'm, it can be, I'm, I'm, you know, we're over the finances and, you know, we're left to make this, uh, the ultimate decision concerning this. Um, and it's been such a trying time for, for everyone. Um, we, you miss being in agreement and having, um, things available for, um, families who have been in need in the course of this pandemic throughout Christmas. Um, so across the board, you know, I mean, let's come together, um, you know, for once and do what's right for the employees here in, in the city of Bessemer. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes sir, Mayor Gully.
Um, the, the, the only way, uh, as we've stated once before, and so that you can bonus, that you can bonus taxpayer dollars, uh, is through, uh, the process of a, a longevity. Uh, the definition of longevity itself means that you will have to, you will have to be tiered and so at some particular point to justify, uh, longevity. So, uh, I don't know, I'll have to get legal, uh, uh, either Attorney Payton or, uh, Attorney Harris to speak to, how can you disperse, uh, uh, taxpayer dollars, uh, if you, if, if, if it's not tiered and if it's not longevity? Cause, uh, as I stated in a previous meeting, uh, uh, you, that you can't take taxpayer dollars and even buy a turkey in and of, uh, uh, for Christmas and hand it out in and of to, uh, 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 employees. So, uh, tell me, uh, legally, uh, from some, the, the attorneys, how and so can you, can, can you disperse, uh, taxpayer funding without, without longevity? We've looked at the personnel board, we've looked at the way and so dispersed funds, uh, uh, Council, uh, Crusoe is correct, yes. Council's over the finances, but, you know, um, she's correct, the, uh, council is over the finances, but the law, the law dict- dictates what we can and cannot and so do. Thank you.
Yes sir, Madam Chair, can I, um, before the attorney speaks, um, to that, can I ask another question as well?
Yes ma'am.
For the, um, probation or for the, um, appointed employees, I mean, so, I mean, how, how will they fall into this? I mean, you know, I, I, I see about the number of years, um, is that including like the laborers? Or people who have been in, appointed in, in positions or people still on probation? Um, you know, are, are, are those all being factored in as well, Mayor Gully?
Uh, that is correct, they were still, they would still be employees, they would still be in some, uh, 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 given, um, the longevity pay as well.
Yes sir, I, I just wanted, I didn't see any wording for that, but I, I was just, um, asking a question, thank you so much, sir. Okay, now we can, um, we sit back and listen to the attorneys with the, um, longevity or how we can, um, go about making this happen.
Attorney Peyton, are you on the line?
Yes ma'am, um, so, longevity pay is allowed, any pay that we make, uh, goes through the Personnel Board of Jefferson County, and longevity pay is allowed by the Jefferson County Personnel Board. So, the mayor's correct, you just can't, you can't bonus it, but you can do a longevity pay. Uh, the, the format that I used in drafting this resolution is the same format that Jefferson County used, uh, that was permitted with the longevity pay plan, uh, the, the, they had, they had more criteria than this one, I think they did a zero to one, one to three, four to five, or something like that to, to get their breakdowns, uh, ours was just a zero through nine and ten and over, so we only had two breaks in ours.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so, with these two breakdowns that we have on the paperwork that's before us, that justifies it being tiered, uh, Attorney Peyton?
That's my opinion, yes ma'am.
Okay, well, if that be the case, then we can go from the zero to nine, remain at the five fifty and the ten and above, take, still take it to a thousand dollars. It, may, is that permissible, is that still considered tiered?
I think the rate that you choose is, is up to the council, okay?
Madam Chair.
Um, one moment, Counselor, uh, Crusoe, I didn't hear what you said the last amount, what was that?
The opposite, you, for, for us, zero to nine, you, we can remain at the five fifty and the ten and above, um, one thousand dollars. I mean, he, he just said that, you know, this is a breakdown that, you know, justifies through the Jefferson County Personnel Board, the, um, the tiered, um, let's just increase the ten and over to one, one thousand. You know, I mean, one, one, once, once the tax is finished, um, being drawn out of them, at least have, let them have something to at least pay one bill in the house.
Okay, Counselor Alexander.
Madam Chair, I, I agree wholeheartedly with, um, Counselor Crusoe, and if we have to use the tier breakdown, I do agree with those numbers. And like Mayor Gully have said before, we are over the finances. We bring the numbers back to him, so he can carry them out, let's get some numbers together, let's, let's do what we gotta do past this resolution, so our employees can get some type of assistance, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Uh, you go ahead, Counsel Marshall.
Counselor Marshall.
You, you know, I'm all in favor of showing our appreciation to our employees. You know, we used a term lightly that the counsel is over the finances, yet that, that's what the law says, okay? But we can't take that lightly. And, and, and it seems that we, we wanna say that, but, but we're not in a position to see every financial transaction that has to take place in this city on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, we, we, we don't know it to that detail because we're not engaged on a day-to-day basis. As I mentioned last time, you know, you can play to the employees as much as you want to, and they'll be happy to get a thousand dollars. But what happens six months down the road, when the mayor comes back and say, hey, we've got a real shortfall, uh, we're gonna have to lay off some people? I, I think any of our employees, my thinking, would, would be very happy to receive what, what we've got here, the five fifty and seven hundred. Sure, taxes come out, I mean, that's just the way it is, we can't get around taxes, taxes gotta come out. I think this is, is showing some, some, some tremendous appreciation to our employees. You know, taking it up, yeah, you make few people happy, but then what happens when it's time to lay off some? Yes, we are over finances, but we are not in, in a position to know the finances on a day-to-day basis the way that the, the Chief Operating Officer does, and, and the way the mayor understands the finances, and what roadblocks we could run into if we up this to a thousand dollars. Thank you, Madam.
Um, Madam Chair, oh, excuse me, I'm, I think, uh, Counsel Matthews was next, I, I, you go, I wait.
Counselor Matthews.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I heard the word, uh, probation, uh, and if, and I don't know the, what's the probation time period, but, uh, are you, and someone can answer me on this, uh, who knows? Are you, uh, considered permanent hire, uh, while you're on probation with the city of Bessemer? And would, would it be? I'm, I'm just asking, would it be right to, you know, somebody who just came last week?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it came up when you said, I heard somebody said probation. You came last week, you'd be on probation, and when is the probationary period, uh, when does it end?
Madam President.
Yes sir, Mayor Gully.
Uh, probation for a city employee regardless of whether that employee, uh, is a laborer, uh, uh, hired in a, in a capacity, uh, uh, is twelve months.
Okay.
Uh, uh, from the day a person is hired, uh, just like they receive any benefits and so of the city, um, I guess, i.e., uh, uh, medical, dental, uh, insurance, anything that's available and so to an employee, uh, that person, uh, uh, is, is available to that person at the moment that they are hired. So yes, you may be on a twelve-month and so, um, you may be on a twelve-month, uh, probationary period because, uh, that, that, that's based in self on hiring from the Jefferson County Personnel Board.
Okay.
But, uh, you still entitled in self to, um, all, all benefits, you still pay into RSA, you still, uh, get uh, medical benefits, you still get, uh, everything that's available, holiday pay, you still get anything that's available to any other employee when you're hired from day one.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President.
But, yes ma'am, Counselor Thickpen.
Um, did this fall into the five hundred thousand, the amount that we are given here? That's my first question, then I have another comment. Was it really?
Madam President, um, there were three things and so, uh, three numbers and so, uh, mentioned. Uh, Counselor Matthews mentioned four hundred and fifty thousand, I think Counselor Donald mentioned five hundred thousand.
Right.
Uh, and, and the, the last number and so is what, and so we felt, and so the, uh, the general fund, what kind of hit the general fund could afford and stuff to take. All three of those things and so were discussed. I think the numbers and so that you have before you, maybe about four hundred and twenty-two, twenty-five thousand dollars. That, so, uh, yes, uh, uh, to, to, to go to a thousand, um, obviously will exceed the, the four hundred and fifty, uh, uh, and I don't know about the five hundred thousand, I'll have to look at that, but as of, obviously, uh, uh, um, when I'm sitting down, I'm looking at, uh, uh, all three of those numbers that we looked at, and I'm also looking at, uh, uh, what I feel and so, uh, the, um, the number and so that, that, that I general fund, at this particular and so point, what kind of hit that it can take, thank you.
Um, Madam Chair.
My comment was, um, I appreciate every employee that we have with the city of Bessemer. But that's the fact that they are employees and they have not missed a paycheck through this pandemic, I mean, they may have spouses or someone else that has, may have missed one, but as far as we've taken care of our employees, this is just a bonus to them, this isn't to help them through the pandemic. They, we've kept the, kept their paychecks coming, and we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but this isn't uh, to make up for COVID, this is just a bonus and a thank you to them because they haven't missed a paycheck.
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am, Counselor Crusoe.
Um, uh, you, this wasn't ever stated as far as in trying to compensate for any lost fundings, um, as far as the wordness force with the COVID CARES Act money, this was one of the things that it was, it, it, it was until to cover. So, you know, it, it's not like we, we're, we're not, like, we're, we're giving them anything.
Madam President.
Counselor Collier.
Yes ma'am.
Welcome back, Counselor Collier.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, and, uh,
Have we, um, have we announced Counselor Collier?
Yes ma'am, there. Yes ma'am, yeah. Okay. And, and, uh, to piggyback off, uh, Councilman Thickpen, Matthews, and Councilman Marshall, you know, we do have to be careful with our money. And we do, you know, appreciate, we appreciate all our employees, and we did tell the mayor to go back and see what he could figure out, and this is what he came back with. He came back with greater numbers, and I think the employees at the end of the day would be satisfied with the numbers we have and to be appreciative of keeping their job and not being cut or be, uh, laid off at any time, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, got one more question that, uh,
Yes sir, Counselor.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a statement, I, I was hoping, I was hoping, uh, when we initially asked about the four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars, that we could have, uh, separately done this in a, uh, being that it's been, it's gonna be, it's taking some time to, uh, go through this, and everybody had comments, I was hoping we could have done this in just a meeting alone, just taking up this item. But, man, my question is, uh, where, if, if we're at four hundred and twenty-two, man, wh- where was the starting point of this money, was it in the eight hundred thousand dollar range? Six hundred thousand, seven hundred, wh- where were we? Because, uh, as Counselor Crusoe just said, this money came down, uh, and it's not like the city of Bessemer is giving, giving it out of their monies. This money came to us, so we disbursed it back out, uh, and my question is, at what amount came in, uh, came down for us to have four hundred and twenty-two thousand at this point? Uh, were we at eight hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, we were at, we were at some greater amount in order to, uh, disperse four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars? What was our starting numbers?
Ma- ma- Madam President.
Yes sir.
Uh, 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 Counselor Matthews, uh, as you, as you recall, uh, we discussed this in great detail, and so at the last and so meeting. Uh, two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in so was, uh, uh, was dispersed of the one point two million that went in self to life packs, that's going to go in all and so for the municipal buildings, and all and so with police, police cars. Uh, the, the additional, uh, 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 funding, which is around eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh, uh, as, uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, and so was a reimbursement, and so for monies that you had already in self dispersed. As we discussed in the last meeting, there was no significant big pot of money sitting somewhere. All and so of what was done was a reimbursement of what the city had already in self dispersed. And so, so, since we were reimbursed for what we had already dispersed, that's where the discussion started when it comes to, okay, uh, since we were reimbursed, let's look at longevity, uh, bonus, or whatever in some definition that, that we wanna use, ends up to, uh, 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 reward and some our employees during, uh, uh, this pandemic. So, that, 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 I, you know, we, we discussed it over and over and over at the last meeting. This was a complete reimbursement of what had already in self been in so, uh, which is, what would have already been this, uh, uh, dispersed. So that's, that's how the Federal CARES Act money in so come down, it just wasn't a check written, it was a reimbursement of what you had already spent.
And we had already spent what? I'm just asking, wh- what, what had we already spent, what, what, how much was, were we reimbursed, let me ask it that way? Was it the eight, eighty-nine?
We were reimbursed, uh, told Bessemer's allotment of CARES Act funding was one point two million, no matter what we submitted, we could have submitted in so five million, we weren't gonna get but one point two million in self back, for whatever we in self had spent.
So what you saying, if we, we taking away the, the two seventy-four from the one, one point two?
Yeah, uh, right, right at one point two, one point one and some change.
And all we can afford is, and so, and so all we can afford is four twenty-two? If we were, if you take the two seventy-four from the one point two, that leaves you a little under, uh, about nine hundred thousand, so.
Mm-hmm.
The approximate amount was eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand and so and some change, uh, uh, um, Counselor Matthews.
Vote twenty.
I, I can't, I guess I can't express, I, I can't express it any more clear than I already have.
It's reimbursed.
Right, it's rea- right, it's rea- it's reimbursable money, uh, uh, I, 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 I sent an initial resolution, it had in self an amount, that amount in so, uh, 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 was rejected. Uh, I was actually go back and so and do exactly what, uh, uh, you all instructed and so me and so to do. I come back with a resolution based in self on, and so what we felt, and so the general fund could take in self a hit on, and still in self be uh, uh, significantly in self sound, that's what I self I've done. Now, if that dollar amount is not satisfactory, then in so you know, I, I, uh, you, you all tell me what figures that you want, once again, but I'll have to manage the operations and so of the city based in self on that, so, uh, uh, we've had, like, like I said, we had this discussion over and over and over again.
Yeah.
I'll have to do whatever and so I have to do after this, and so to keep the city in self afloat. But what you're asking me and so to do is tell me what we can do that I feel that we in so can competently operate, pay all our bond debt, pay all our employees, pay all of the bills and so of the city, and still stay afloat, and I have done that.
You answered my question, that's, uh, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes sir, and we're going to, we're going to move on with a vote.
Okay.
Or, go ahead, Counselor Marshall.
You know, at, at the same time, you know, I, I don't think because, you know, we, we think we got money reimbursed, that we got a pool of money and we just got ex- excess money, and we ought to, you know, kind of think we've got money to blow in the, in the wind. A- again, I, I just go back to, you know, revenue is down, all of those things are, are to be considered, and, uh, as Counselor Thickpen said, no employee has missed a paycheck, we pray that none of them ever have to miss a paycheck. But, you know, I, 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 I think this is a, a good package and a, a, a good sign that, that we really do appreciate what our employees do, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselors, for that discussion. Uh, we do have a resolution, and we can entertain the zero to nine, we can take a vote on those counselors who want to entertain zero to nine years, five fifty, ten and above, one thousand, or zero to nine, five fifty, ten and above, seven hundred. We can entertain those two, so we, yes, yes sir, Counselor Matthew.
The mayor did make a, make a, uh, statement at his, when he was closing, and when he asked, asked my question. And that is, um? His statement was, it's up to us if, if we wanted to uh entertain this. And I would uh submit that, that zero to nine be six hundred and that uh, ten years and over be eight hundred. That's? That's just my way of, and that's why I was saying, I was hoping, cause we've been talking about this for, we've had several different comment. That's why I was hoping that we could have entertained this separately. Uh, and everybody would have gotten all, now, I'm, I'm in a, in a understanding mode, don't get me wrong. I understand it in its totality. But I'm just saying, I wish we could have handled this alone uh by itself. I mean, but it's, I'm, I'm good. Don't, don't get me wrong, but I, I just think that uh, ten years and over would be eight and that zero to nine to be uh, six hundred, six hundred and eight hundred, that's all.
Is that a motion, Mr. Matthews?
Yes ma'am.
I'll second that.
Councilors, it has, a motion has been placed on the floor for longevity pay for our citizens here in the city of Bessemer.
Not citizens.
Employees.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I keep my mind on the citizens at all times. Uh, the employees here in the city of Bessemer, zero to nine years, six hundred dollars. And those with ten years and above, eight hundred dollars. It has been properly moved and second. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Council Alexander. Councilor Collier. Councilor Crusoe. Councilor Crusoe.
Nay.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Nay.
We have five ayes, two nays. The motion carries.
We'll be looking for a corrected um, resolution and that is Attorney Peyton for zero to nine years, six hundred, ten years and above, eight hundred dollars for longevity pay.
And Madam Chair.
Yes sir.
If you don't mind, then we have the, the, the total, the mayor said that was in the tune of four hundred and twenty-two thousand. Where if, being that it's bumped up now, I'd like to uh add a total on that as well, uh, Mayor Gully.
Thank you, and we would ask for the totals to be on, in the resolution so that we can go ahead and give um? The employees of the city of Bessemer um?
Um, Madam Chair. I just like, Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm, I just wanna make one brief statement before we, and so we can move on, you know, maybe, you know, it's no sense I keep beating a, a dead horse now. Um, I would like to ask that, you know, from hence forward, I mean, this is um, somewhat like the first opportunity that we've had as a council to really be able to dictate the finances um, you're here i- i- in the city of Bessemer since I, you know, really since I've been around the table, you know, and, and, and it's more so where it's kind of be, you know, come back and being placed in a, in a, in our lap with, you know, um, you know, with, with instructions already attached. With this uh, cares act money along with the rest of the, um, the finances here in, in the city of Bessemer. I would hope that, you know, um, that, you know, um, we would be granted the same respect from hi- henceforth a- as to any, any expenditures um that takes place here in the city of Bessemer comes before the council um, a- a- and you, a- a- um, as, as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Crusoe.
Ma- ma- Madam President.
Yes sir, Mayor Gully.
Just, just call your annual general fund budget. You have control and so over all and so of the finances. After you approve a budget, all I'm doing is operating within the parameters of that budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Gully, and we, we do have the budget, councilors. We received the budget on Friday. Please take your time and go through it because as you say, Councilor Crusoe and Mayor Gully say it. We do have an annual budget. And we do have control over the finances here and in the city of Bessemer. Preferably we won't have to lay off anyone and or send anyone home because of finances. Item number eleven, uh, twelve, please.
Madam, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes sir.
I keep hearing a term that? Control, control. Is this what this is all about? That's my comment.
No sir, Councilor Marshall, I don't think this is what it's all about, control. No sir, I truly don't think this is what it's all about because at the end of the day.
We can move on.
As Mayor Gully, I'll move on when I finish speaking. At the end of the day, as Mayor Gully said, he is the CEO and he does need us and we need him to do what's best for this city. Item number twelve, please, Ms. Tate.
A resolution awarding bid for professional cleaning services at Bessemer City Hall to the lowest responsible bidder.
Councilor, you have seen this, we um, we've sent it out for our fee, came back in. We sent it to Mayor Gully for a recommendation. But on my paperwork, I didn't see a recommendation. I saw all of the the people that had placed their applications for for the janitorial services. Mayor Gully, is there a recommendation?
Uh, Madam President, um, no ma'am, there is no recommendation. I'm referring this back and so to the city council with a non-recommendation. The lowest bidder and so was currently and so the cleaning service, which uh, obviously you all were not pleased with and so um, uh, uh, at this time, and they were the lowest bidder. Then the second and so lowest bidder may have been and so the company that was previously the cleaning, uh, uh, the cleaning company and so of City Hall. So, uh, 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 I cannot and so give them so a, uh, a recommendation back to you uh, when uh, the two companies and so that you have previously denied uh, 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 that you're not satisfied and so with, I, I have to refer this and so back and so to you all and you will have to decide who you want to clean.
Councilors, uh, with that being said? Is it the consensus of this council that I will place this on, uh, planning session for next week?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Number twelve will be placed on planning session for next week. Item number thirteen, please.
Item thirteen, it's a resolution extending the use of the Bessemer Civic Center by Bessemer Municipal Court.
Councilors, we received a letter and the letter is attached to the resolution that the Bessemer Civic Center uh, that the municipal court will continue the use of the Bessemer Civic Center until last day of April. I need a mo- any questions and or concerns? If not, I need a motion and a second.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Which one am I, who, who, yes?
Uh, I'm sorry, Councilor Crusoe was first.
Okay, um, my question is concerning, um, are we renting the, um, the civic center to the municipal courts? Are we?
Councilor Crusoe.
I mean, you can, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, my, my question is, um, um, are we renting the, the civic center to the municipal courts? Or um, we're just, um, you know, allowing them to, um, just utilize it? Wh- wh- how, what are we doing here?
I'm reading uh, down number one. Um, it state that we rented it to them from December, uh, to December thirty of twenty twenty. Uh, through April the thirty of twenty twenty-one. Uh, I'll let, um, I'll ask Attorney Peyton to answer that question, please.
Sure, Councilor Donald, uh, the, you're renting it to them at the standard rate of, of, of the Bessemer Civic Center. So then municipal court will pay that the daily rate if they use the civic center over to the general fund out of the municipal court fund. That's the way it works. And by doing it that way, um, if there is more cares act funding in the future, hopefully you can use that as a qualifying reimbursement from the federal government with cares act fund.
From, uh, thank you, Attorney Peyton. From what I hear, there is more cares act money coming down the line for the cities and municipalities. Um, does that answer your question, Councilor Crusoe?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Um, now, any more questions and concerns? Council Alexander?
I, I just wanted to know, uh, cause I remember in the previous meeting, they were saying that we could uh, put in the resolution to, to let them uh, rent it for free for no cost. So this will be at cost to the municipal court. Just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that is what Attorney Peyton would say.
I'm sorry, yes ma'am, it's at the standard rental rate of the civic center, yes ma'am.
Twelve hundred dollars a day.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
I need a motion and a second, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes sir.
I move the resolution.
Second, please.
Second.
Has been properly moved and second that we will continue to extend the um, the rental of the Bessemer Civic Center to the municipal court here in the city of Bessemer. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Council Alexander. Council Collier. Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews. Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, please.
A resolution authorizing payment to E E F S Company P C for November twenty twenty invoices.
I think I got a call on yesterday stating that um? These invoices has already been paid. Ms. Coleman, are you on the line? Ms. Coleman. Ms. Coleman. Item number twenty, not fourteen. I apologize, council, that was item number twenty that had already been paid. Item number fourteen, councilors, you have the invoices in our packet. Is any questions and or concerns?
Madam Chair.
Yes sir.
I move the resolution.
Need a second, please.
Second.
Has been properly moved and second that we'll accept the invoices for E E F S Company P C for the month of November twenty twenty. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Council Alexander. Council Collier. Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn. Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Item number fifteen.
Hey, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes sir.
Uh, I'd just like to ask, um, uh, uh, Ron Gilbert, uh, how are we and what's the status on uh, this? The new Starbucks coffee site? If he's on the line.
Yes sir, they're, um, they're ready to go as soon as they come, uh, pick a permit up. I know the civil engineering portion and the surveying portion has been, has been a- approved. So, it's in, in Starbucks hands now and, and um, I guess the purchase of the property from Town and Country.
Okay, can we let the council know where that exact location is, please?
Yes, it's a, the corner of um? There where um, Academy Drive ties into U S eleven.
Yeah.
There about Town and Country Ford.
Alright, thank you, sir. You gotta got a little tongue twisted then, but okay, I got you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gilbert. Let me ask one question, please. Uh, the sidewalks that are being replaced on um? Twenty-ninth and Berkeley Avenue that is at no cost to the city. Is that correct?
Yes ma'am, that is all a part of the original contract from the contractor and, um, and they are replacing the ones that didn't meet specification.
Yes sir, they look so much better. Thank you all for staying on top of that. Item number sixteen, Ms. Taylor, uh, fifteen, Ms. Taylor.
Item fifteen, the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute commercial sales agreement, addendum and repurpose, repurchase agreement for the parking located at eighteen hundred dash eighteen ten Third Avenue North.
Attorney Peyton, are you on the line?
Yes ma'am.
Have we closed or are we ready to close?
Well, uh, the, the contract looks good for you guys to sign and I think Q's on the line with us here and I think uh, they'll be prepared to close by the end of February is my understanding.
Yep, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, yeah, we're waiting on the offer, uh, give a quick update. Uh, all of the closing uh, things, the items needed uh have been finalized and sent over to Hope. Uh, the last thing was the insurance binder, uh, which they are reviewing. So once we get the updated uh, offer, then we can send it up to them and also to the title company uh, to get it closed off.
Well, we'll be ready to close by the end of February.
Yes, yes ma'am, that's the, that's the plan. We're just waiting for the offer so we can submit it to the title company.
Are there any more questions and or concerns for? Concerning item number fifteen, please. If not, I need a motion and a second.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes sir.
I'm, I move the resolution.
Second.
It's properly moved and second. That we'll accept the sale of the surplus props, surplus property at eighteen hundred through eighteen ten Third Avenue. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Council Alexander. Council Collier. Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you all.
I look forward to closing on this property on and about February, the last day in February.
Yes ma'am.
For coming to this.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, please.
Item sixteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute micro enterprise assistance agreement with Create Birmingham.
Councilors, this is the program that um, Mr. Norris brought to us along with Create Birmingham sixteen and seventeen go together with the uh, cares act funding that we're going to educate uh, some of our small businesses. Go together with the CARES Act funding that we're going to educate, uh, some of our small businesses. And they will receive CARES, CARES Act funding that we will, um, help the community uh, through the Salvation Army with, uh, utilities. We have two, um, resolutions. Item number 15 and item number 16. Are there any questions on, concerning item number 15?
Is 16 and 17 present?
Uh, I'm sorry, 16 and 17. I do apologize.
Yeah, I, I have, I have, uh, I have a course.
Yes, sir.
And I'm looking at, I'm looking at this resolution and, uh, and, and from time to time, we've, we've asked, uh, at, on the tail end of, I guess, about finances and, um, what they've been approving, who got them, who received them. Uh, and in my mind, I was thinking about this looking. This Create Birmingham, uh, on behalf of the city of Bessemer, this was, uh, kind of model, model after, after another resolution, I think. But Attorney Peyton and Attorney Harris, uh, if you all remember, we, when the council asked about certain monies that has been spent in times past, you said that we could not, uh, uh, you know, and I put it like this, when we asked about the HUD money, uh, and on the tail end of it, we, when we asked for what was this used for, who got this, we could not, uh, get information. Is this along the same line? Could you all explain that to me, please?
So Counselor, this is Shan, um, this is CDBG HUD funding.
Right.
So my, my concern, of concern would be first, uh, regarding personal identifiable information coming back, probably more so with, uh, with the Salvation Army funding than the other, because the Salvation Army funding is for, where someone gets in a situation where they can't pay the rent, they can't pay their utility. Um, and, and so the Salvation Army is actually in charge, there's a sub grantee of making those grants. Um, the only time they would come back to the city would be if, for instance, they knit, they Salvation Army felt the need that for more than one month. But in the agreement, the document says that for no more than three months, they could come back to the Economic and Community Development Department. So it didn't come back to the city council, it didn't come back to the mayor's office, it comes back to that department to, um, administer that funding, which then protects that personal identifiable information to keep you within the HUD guidelines. I hope that answered your question.
No, it didn't, but, uh, uh, let me, let me ask it in, 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 let me ask it in another form then. And that form is, uh, you say we, the, it come, you saying about identifiable, okay? That's the word you use, right? Uh, and that's on the, that's on the back end of it. So we can't even know anything on the front end either.
So what?
Just, well, let me ask like this, if this was appropriated to, uh, H and H LLC, I'm just using that now, uh, could it not come back to the council before it's awarded to them? Opposed to the council asking, who was it, uh, awarded to in February, uh, March of 2021, if we ask this question six months down the road? That's my question.
All right, so the Salvation Army money is for individuals.
Yeah.
It is not.
Yeah, okay, it don't matter who is far, I'm just saying, can the council know on the front end opposed to asking six months or a year down the road? That's what I'm asking.
Well, my understanding from the HUD guidelines is that the council should not know the personal identifiable information at all. That's my understanding, that's what I read from the guidelines.
But I, I, and what I don't understand is the persons that approving this, these finances, approving them. And I stick, I put a, a pin in a pruner. We can't know anything, only thing we can do is approve it, but Salvation Army can know, you can know, the mayor can know. And I'm just, I'm trying to see, I'm trying to balance this thing and see what's, what's so identifiable and so, uh, identifiable prohibited that we can't know, that's all I'm asking.
Certainly. Well, my understanding on the HUD guidelines is that the, again, the personal identifiable information, the name, the address, social security numbers, those are the things that you cannot give out. Now, the sub grantee is the Salvation Army, they would be, quote, the administrator of this grant. They would have them, because they are the ones that are approving it, okay?
Okay, Attorney Harris, what's your, what's your, uh, I want to hear your, your, your spiel too. I want 50 from you and 50 from Attorney Peyton, so let me hear 50.
Can you hear me, counsel?
Yeah, I hear.
Yes.
I, I think the thing may be to see if we can build some kind of wall around the PII while the council still exercises its statutory function with regards to the expenditure. I think we, we need to take a serious look and see how can we actually, there's no question that we have to, we have to guard, uh, against the PII, that personal identifying information. But I think we need to see if we can somehow build a wall around that so that we can, uh, do one function without, without violating, uh, something else.
Okay, and, and, and let me, let me just go a little bit first, because, you know, a year from now, uh, uh, I might ask the mayor, uh, hey, who was this money gave, given to, I'm just using this now. Then he, he has to go through, uh, two months or one month of trying to identify, but if this council had that same information or similar in their own possession or a resolution saying we appropriated, uh, uh, this money, X amount of dollars was appropriated to, uh, Jackson LLC, uh, for, uh, $50,000, I'm just using that one too now. Well, we would have that, we wouldn't have to go back and con, and, and say, I need that resolution, I need this, that's, that's, that's why I'm asking, because it seemed like it, it bogs us down over a period of time, asking for various and different information that we can already have in our own possession.
So, Mr. Matthews.
That's a way to look at it.
This is Shane, again, so, you know, you set the parameters of the program as to who it can go to, they have to be citizens of Bessemer. They have to qualify, they have to be either back rent, back rent holder, they have to be, uh, addicted. They have to have outstanding utility bills. So you set all the parameters, so the Salvation Army must spend that money using your parameters and then report back to you that they spent that money according to your parameters. By doing so, they're not giving you the names of the individuals, but they are giving you the parameters that you set up of what the money can be used for and that they have expended the money. The contract says that they have to spend it by January the 31st, they have to give monthly reports showing how many of these grants were, were made. So I, I think you, you are holding them accountable and you can get reports as to that, you're just not getting the names of the specific individuals.
Okay. Yeah, but you know, there's loophole, you know, there's a lot of loopholes. I just don't want, I, I just don't, I, I just don't want nobody but it, uh, type of thing that, uh, I know them and they get this and y'all know what I'm talking about.
Well, I know the city's not making any referrals, I mean, they will go straight to the Salvation Army. If someone is on Salvation Army, I'd love for them to speak on it, they actually, um, are doing administering the program for Jefferson County, so I'd love for them to speak on it and how it is administered.
Okay, well, you and Attorney Harris a- answered my question and Attorney Harris, you, you said that the, the, I know you use, uh,
PII.
PII, personal information. Uh, I, I understand that, but I, I just wanted to, you know, to tighten the lasso as much as possible so it wouldn't be any, uh, wiggle room for, uh, dual, dual appropriation or Kendrick and all of that. That's all I'm looking for. And, 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 and for the council to have something in their possession to, so we, so we won't, we won't be repetitive in, in going back, asking this and asking that, you know, go ahead, I'm finished.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Counsel Alexander.
I just, I mean, can we not put this on planning session and have both organizations come present to us? I mean, this, this resolution was like thrown in our face, I mean, we were told by Mr. Norris, but neither one of the companies, the Salvation Army is not on the line, nor is the Birmingham, um,
Create Birmingham.
Create Birmingham, and I would love to hear from them, I mean.
They are on the line, actually.
Okay, well, yeah, I would love to hear from, from someone.
Madam President, this is, this is, uh, Mr. Norris here, we do have representatives from both the Salvation Army and Create Birmingham on the line.
Okay, why couldn't this be done in a planning session? That's all I'm saying, this could have been done in a planning session or presentation.
Counselor Alexander, are you asking the body to, um, to send these two items, 16 and 17, to the planning session next week?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking the body?
Yes, because I researched other organizations like the Urban League, JCCO, and other organizations, have we reached out to those organizations to have them come present as well? I mean, who chose these two organizations? Was it a council, was it a, a council body that chose these or was it one particular person?
Thank you, Counsel Alexander.
Uh, Madam President, this is Mr. Norris again. And can I address some of those questions?
Yes, sir, go ahead and address those questions, but I'm, 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 I'm going to suggest that we send it to planning session, but you can go ahead and address some of those questions.
Yeah, I am going to address those questions. Uh, number one, there are two different criteria that HUD establishes on working with nonprofit or contract agencies. One is you can have a contract and on that you can put out a request for, propose. The second one is you can identify a sub grantee that is doing work in that general area. The Salvation Army is doing work currently for Jefferson County administering a program that is very similar to ours. And Create Birmingham, we reached out to them and several other agencies, but they had a, a very established program that when we looked at it, we said this would be a good fit. They've already been working with, uh, agencies up in Birmingham, and I think Mr. Palmer's on the phone. Uh, I think they're actually working with the city of Birmingham on some, or have worked with the city of Birmingham on some technical assistance for small businesses. So, uh, in order to get the funds out into the public to assist our small businesses, many of whom have been suffering since the lockdowns of March 2020, and to assist many of our residents who have been suffering as a result of, uh, the COVID impacts, we reached out to these agencies. We did our due diligence with, uh, due diligence, we talked to other agencies, and we felt that these two were the best fit. Salvation Army already had experience in working with HUD programs, which is very important to us because you have to understand some of the requirements that HUD has before you can turn these over to other organizations. You mentioned JCCO, I am actually on the JCCO board, and I do know that JCCO is already doing some administration of some state funds. Uh, I did have a very brief conversation with them as well. So these were the two agencies that we felt were, that could, uh, help us meet the demands of the grant and assist the people here in the city of Bessemer.
Mr. Norris, you speak in French, because you're saying we, who are we? Because we as a council body have to vote on these finances to be passed. So when you say we thought that this would be a good fit, we thought, who is we? Cause I, I don't, I mean, I don't understand who is we, when we as a council body has to, have to sign on.
Yes, I'm gonna ignore that comment on French, because that really is not really relevant to this conversation. As I said, when it's we, I speak with the staff, I reached, I talked with Mr. Ward, we went through our compliance and we also spoke with the various agencies. And so we, we, and when I say we, I mean, the staff, and there's, and me a consultation with the mayor. We reached out to these two agencies and we said, hey, we think these are two good agencies that we've, that we can bring for, that have some experience in these areas and that can assist the residents and assist the businesses here in the city of Bessemer.
Madam Chair.
Counsel, Counsel Donald, I think we should put it on plan, and I mean, they, they trying to make it seem like, uh, that it needs to be done expeditiously, but March the 1st, when the pandemic happened, we did not reach out to these organizations to try to, to help for the citizens of the small businesses, so I don't see what's wrong with putting it on planning session, we'll hold it up or it'll be a dire need, uh, right at this moment.
You, Counsel Alexander, Counsel Marshall.
Um, fir- first of all, it's not city money, is, it's a HUD grant for both, both of these items. I, 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 I just don't understand the fact that some of us don't trust the capability of, of, of people to, to bring us good recommendations. I mean, how, you know, we, 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 we say we want to help our citizens. You know, you know, we get an opportunity to do that, but then all of a sudden, that control thing gets back in the way. We want to get control of this, we want to be over this, we want to make sure this is done the way we want it to be done. I mean, th- thi- this has been presented to us, the two organizations have been presented to us prior to now. This ain't, this ain't just thrown in nobody's face. You, you, you know, we've heard about this, you know, maybe a month ago, Create and the Salvation Army. The resolutions were in the pack Friday, so it wasn't just thrown in, in anybody's face. So I, I mean, I, I, I just really don't understand this, now we down to one mile an hour.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Counsel calling you.
Can we hear them speak since they're here? Uh, they're kind of making a little quick.
I mean, they're not on the phone, they're not here, they're on the phone, I mean, the chambers.
I thought they were, oh, they're not available to treat, okay.
No, they're not here, they're on the phone.
Madam President, oh, that's incorrect. Uh, persons and stuff from both organizations are on the line.
I said they were on the phone.
Okay, no ma'am, no ma'am, they are on the virtual call.
Okay, yeah, could we hear them speak?
I did say they were on the telephone, they are not in the chambers.
The sentence there, can, can we hear them speak?
Mayor Gully.
The sentence there, available, can we hear them speak?
Three minutes. Each of them, please. Mayor Gully, are they available? Are they available? Are they on the line, Carlton?
Listen, Mr., uh, Madam President, Mr. Norris, uh, are these, uh, organizations available to speak?
Uh, councilman, yes, we have Mr. Palmer, Buddy, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So he's with Create Birmingham, he's the executive director. Can you tell the council a little bit about some of the work that you're doing up in Birmingham? And our conversations with you and how your agency goes about assisting small businesses slash micro enterprise, particularly those that are owned by minorities and female?
Absolutely.
Good morning, one moment, Mr. Palmer, good morning. Good morning. One moment, Mr. Palmer. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam.
How are you?
I'm well, and yourself?
I am wonderful. Um, give us a three-minute presentation. I know you can do it.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning to all of the council members. Uh, Create Birmingham is a nonprofit economic development agency focused primarily on work with creative industries in the area of uh design, the arts, culinary and beverage, performing arts uh and visual arts and crafts. However, uh, we for the last seven years have been administering a curriculum for early-stage and aspiring entrepreneurs called Co-Starters, which uh is a curriculum that really fits for all Main Street, mom-and-pop kinds of businesses, not strictly for those that fit within creative industries. And in that seven years period, we've had approximately between two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred participants go through the program uh from all across the region and have had many uh businesses uh launched uh through participation in the program. Um, we have probably thirty-something percent of our of the of the businesses that have gone through are in some way culinary-related, whether restaurants, food trucks, food products, beverage products. Uh, probably our second-largest sector uh would be considered lifestyle, health and wellness, fitness types of businesses. Uh, following that, probably um retail. Um, and in terms of our demographics, we are probably uh fifty-two percent minority, uh thirty-seven percent um black women. Actually, our black women entrepreneurs are our fastest-growing sector of participation. Um, and uh not only do we uh have that core curriculum, which is called Co-Starters, but over the course of the seven years that we've been running the program, we have also launched a variety of support services in support of our participants so that at the end of their eleven weeks in the program, we don't merely spit them out and say best of luck to you, but we have various pools of funding that we have to invest in their startups as well as a revolving loan program, microloan program that is only for graduates of our program. So what we say is that we really are relational economic development. It's not so much that we're investing in business concepts as it is that we are investing in the entrepreneurs themselves, in their passion, in their talent, uh, and in a belief in them. So I'll stop there and and see if I have.
Yes, because your time is up, and I think you've given us a wealth of wealth of information there because um one, I didn't know who Create Birmingham was, and I looked it up and I found out uh those things that you do, but I we still wanted you to come in and present with us. Thank you so much, Mr. Palmer, being on the line.
Madam President, we also have a representative from the Salvation Army here.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stamps, are you on the line? Mr. Stamps.
Yes, sir. I am on the line. Good morning, everyone. And also Major Charles Powell is on the line too with the Salvation Army. I think he wanted to uh share the information. And then I can also come back and share some if he'd like.
Okay, you have the same opportunity as Create Birmingham. You have three minutes.
Major Powell, Salvation Army. Uh, first of all, let me give you a little bit of background on us. The Salvation Army has been serving uh this community, Birmingham, Jefferson County, for a hundred and twenty years. Uh, so we have a long history of serving the people in this community in need. We do have experience in working with federal grants, uh EFSB, we have a working agreement with the VA, uh with child nutrition programs, the likes, programs like that. So we do have experience in working with that. Uh, we, uh, during COVID, we did our own internal when I, we did our own fundraising to raise funds to help people that were in need and uh dispensed uh between three and four hundred thousand of our own funds uh to help people with rent and utility assistance. Some of those lived in Bessemer, others in other sections or communities around Jefferson County. Uh, we do have uh an agreement right now in place with Jefferson County to do this same kind of service. It's right at its beginnings, actually, so I wish I had more history with that to give you information on, but we're really just at the very beginnings of that, but it's to do the same things that you're looking at and that we've done with our own internal fundraising uh to help families with uh rent and utility, uh to help them during times of crisis. Uh, we are uh on board with, was already discussed in in terms of uh personal uh information being protected. That's critical uh to the kind of social work that we do. So we do have experience in those fields, and um hopefully it's something that can be helpful in this case.
Thank you, um, Mr. Powell. Mr. Stamps.
Uh, yes, ma'am. The only thing that I can say in addition to that is that we do have an office in Bessemer, and besides the COVID assistance that we've been doing this year, we've always been able to pay utility bills and assist with rent in the Bessemer area. And so from May twenty twenty to August twenty twenty, we served a total of eighty-three households that were in that area for the amount of fifty-nine thousand sixteen dollars, and we've also distributed two thousand four hundred and eighty-eighty-nine food bags in the Bessemer area from March twenty twenty to November twenty twenty, when the pandemic started.
Thank you so much, Mr. Powell and Mr. Stamps. That that was some great information. Counselor, you've heard Attorney Harris.
Yes. Yes, to either one of the gentlemen, just one question. Uh, i- is it possible to provide the city council, the city of Bessemer with information uh on the projects that you're funding without uh at the same time disclosing PII, personal identification information?
Uh, Greg, this is Terrain. I'll answer that question. They have to provide us with a report because we have to submit that report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, that report does not have to mention personally identifiable information. It can mention information such as number of families helped, uh, number of businesses assisted, and we have absolutely no issue providing that to the council once these programs have uh, once as these programs move along. And particularly at the end, because in terms of the businesses, we really at the end want to know who's been helped. Uh, and we will be more than happy to provide that information to the city council, as well as the number of families, households that have been helped through the program with the Salvation Army. I hope that answers your question.
It it goes towards it. I just wonder if if it's possible, uh, without, once again, without uh disclosing PII to to prior to the funds being drawn down from the city that we're going to do uh help families in this area. I mean, area location-wise, but with this kind of assistance, whatever that might be, and uh we're we 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 have asked an approval to spend uh the council to to approve funds for that purpose without, of course, without having to to disclose PII.
Mr. Harris, this is Terrain, and I think that's a question that you need to have with the mayor. I don't think it's appropriate to ask to nonprofits. They provide the information to us as sub-grantees, and then that question needs to be broached with the mayor, not necessarily with the nonprofit.
Well, I I and and all due respect, whatever uh the mayor's gonna get is gonna get from them, and if the information is protected. I guess the council, I'm not certain the council really cares whether it gets a direct from from uh either source, but what it wants to know is, I guess, is that uh the money is going for an allowable uh program and in what amount. Is that?
That's correct.
That's absolutely right. That is absolutely correct. That is what the council uh has instructed the attorneys. Now, sorry, let me ask.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Uh, one moment, Counselor Marshall, one moment. I'm speaking. Um, let me turn this down. What's the name of this report, Terrain? Is there a name to the report?
Called a report, counsel.
It's just called a report?
It'll be a monthly report that they'll submit, saying how many families have been helped, uh, how the businesses are progressing through the program, and it'll just be a report. It'll be a report linked to the actual name of the actual program.
Okay, that's what I was getting to. Yes, sir, Counselor Marshall.
I was gonna simply say the information is in the packet in terms of the reporting process. I mean, it it's there. I mean, we 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 talk about helping our people, and and every day that goes by, there's another business that's gone out of business. There's somebody getting evicted. There's somebody's utilities getting paid. Here we are with an opportunity, HUD money, grant money, not city money, that we could be helping people, you know, in a quick and in a hurry. But we want to sit around and talk about, well, we want to hear from how many other agencies. Salvation Army's been around, what, probably over a hundred years. Create Birmingham has been around a a good number of years. I'm quite familiar with them. But but we don't, we don't trust, we don't trust anybody. Not we. Some of you don't trust anybody. We need to help our people, business owners, as well as the everyday citizen who's struggling through this pandemic.
Madam Chair.
Well, Counselor Marshall, uh, one more, Counselor Crusoe, Counselor Marshall, we are for helping our people.
Yes, ma'am.
And um, if anybody know, we've had our boots on the ground since.
Thank you.
Uh, COVID, COVID nineteen has started. As a matter of fact, we'll be in we'll be, when we leave here, we're going to unload a truck here in the city of Bessemer. So we're all for helping our people. But how can I help my people if I don't understand what is going on? It's good to give me a fly-by-night.
Can't you read? Can can you not read? It's it's in the packet.
Counselor Marshall, I will not go there with you.
Thank you. I don't know where you're going. Where are you going?
Packet or whatever.
Well, you don't, you don't, you don't.
Whatever it is, you have been sent to you.
Packet, that's the issue.
Counselor Crusoe, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Read my packet. I've, Counselor Crusoe, please.
Thank you. Um, I mean, you may, it's it's a bit hypocritical. You know, you speak in terms of um government grants, and the care that money was was on government or or federal federally issued money. If we 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 weren't so, you know, strategic as far as in making sure that it went into the the necessary hands. We're just deciding today as to which way, um, that that, you know, it 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 was going to be distributed. So I mean, it it's kind of hypocritical how you go back and forth as to, you know, um, why wasn't this presented in planning session some weeks? And then other weeks, you know, all of a sudden, we we need to push the wagon forward, you know? I mean, for those of us, if 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 more questions are deemed necessary, there's a reason for that. It's a reason for um more information being asked, given for one of the things, I mean, even your citizens and as a council of ourselves. Ever since this pandemic hit, we haven't been hiding in our basements. We've been out distributing, knocking on doors, taking a chance with COVID. I haven't seen, I haven't seen you at anything, um, 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 Counselor Marshall. And for you, how dare you sit here and say that we're trying to withhold something from the citizens or the employees here in the city of Bessemer? We we haven't, we haven't hidden from the pandemic. I'm 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 not going, I'm not going.
Counselors, 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 um, I would ask, my recommendation, I would ask this body, let us have a meeting, a meeting on Thursday on just this topic, so that all of our questions and our answers, our questions can be answered so that we can help our citizens. There's an old cliche, you can't help me if you can't help yourself. And I'd rather get answers that will help someone than not to get answers and not help them. So I would ask this body, uh, if it is, if it is the consensus of this body on these topics, sixteen and seventeen, that we'll have a meeting on Thursday at six-thirty just on these topics, that a way we can, uh, all the questions that need to be asked, because we'll be here at three o'clock. All of the questions that need to be asked, we can ask those questions on Thursday uh at six-thirty. Is that all the consensus of this body?
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mayor Gully.
Um, I'm not available, yourself on Thursday, uh, but I uh, uh, but uh, my question, and 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 Terrain has class, uh, so I don't know if anybody from my office will be available and stuff on Thursday. But I mean, at this particular point, I mean, uh, uh, we, why not just have it on planning session and we discuss it on planning session? Because I, you know, I I'm not available on Thursday. Terrain has class.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor Gully. This will be placed on planning session on next Tuesday. Thank you all, counselors, and thank you, Mayor Gully. Item number eighteen, please.
Approver to advertise for Governmental Utility Services Corporation, GUS Board.
Thank you, um, Ms. Taylor. Counselors, you know that we have a seat becoming available on the GUS Board. I need a, um, and it was, it expired on January one, twenty twenty-one. I need a motion and or a second so that we can go ahead and start advertising for this seat, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I moved a resolution for.
Need a second. It has been properly moved and seconded that we will advertise the Governmental Utility Services Corporation for the city of Bessemer. Ms. Taylor, when would that um advertisement start?
Uh, it will actually start um next Wednesday.
Start next Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
And it will end.
Okay, and it will, um, the length of it would be two weeks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam President, this is Shan. I think, I think, yes, sir. Are you talking about the seat that's currently held by Mr. Mohammed?
Yes, sir.
I think he did submit yesterday a request to be reappointed, so.
He did, and we placed it with the other requests that we had to come in.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Counselor calling you.
Is it, was it a deadline for it for uh, you know, I know I've been here the last couple of meetings. Was it deadline for Mr. Mohammed to get it in?
No, sir, we just started. We just put it out to be advertised. Mr. Mohammed, um, I'm quite sure he had looked at it and saw that it was um, expired on January one, but we've just come to the body to ask to advertise that um, that seat. Now, it's up to this body, if you all want to, go ahead and he got his paperwork in, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, was it yesterday or day before yesterday, yesterday, Friday or yesterday, one of the two? But um, there are some others that did come in.
Oh, Madam President, this is Shan. I think if Mr. Mohammed has requested that he be reappointed, then the according to the ordinance, the council deals with that and either accepts the reappointment, and if they don't accept the reappointment, then you readvertise. I believe that's.
Okay, thank you, um, Attorney Payton.
Madam Chair.
Yes, 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 Mr. Counselor.
Yes, ma'am. Um, as far as in with the letter of reappointment, can can we see a list of the new?
Yes, ma'am. Um, as far as in with the, uh, letter of reappointment, can, can we see a list of the new, um, um, applicants? Um, and then I guess give, give, we'll be left, um, to determine as to whether we'll accept the reappointment or, uh, advertise. Can we get a list of those, please?
Um, you can after, after it has been advertised two weeks and everyone has been given an opportunity to send theirs in with the reappointment, um.
Oh, that's what Attorney, Attorney Payton just said, if we are going to reappoint, then we will reappoint and not go with advertisement.
Well, if, if we're going to reappoint, um, we can, Attorney Payton, can we do that today? Or do we have to wait since he's already gotten his letter in?
All right, so the way I understand the ordinance, I, I don't have that. I'd love to pull it up in front of me, and Greg, you could help me, but they, the way, my understanding of that ordinance for resolution was that when there, when a term expires, if the person that is in the seat requests reappointment, that you either reappoint that person, and if you don't reappoint that person, then you pass a rev- resolution to advertise. Hold on one minute.
Okay, um.
Well, I, I mean, it, it, Madam Chair, if, if we're not rea-, okay, well, I mean, it's, it's more than one way to skin a cat. I mean, if we're not reappointing, he's still open, um, to reapply like everyone else if, if we advertise, isn't it?
Let's, uh, let me, let me regrow the, I've got the ordinance here in front of me now. It says, whenever a board member's term shall expire on a board appointed by the governing body, the following policy shall be adhered to. Any member of a board desiring to be reappointed due to the expiration of the term of office shall tender a written notice of the desire to be reappointed to the city clerk. Upon receipt of notification of the desire to be reappointed, the city clerk shall provide a copy of the notice to the council secretary. Upon receipt of notification of the desire to be reappointed from the board member, the council secretary shall give prompt notice of saying to each member of the council by placing a copy of the notice in the next general correspondence to be delivered to the members of the council. At the next regular meeting, following receipt of notification of the desire to be reappointed from the board, to, from the board member, the city council shall either reappoint the board member for an additional term or authorize a notice of vacancy and invite interested persons to submit resumes to fulfill the position. So, according to this ordinance, I think what would happen is that since Ms. Taylor received that yesterday, this would go in your package. You would consider that appointment at the next council meeting, and you would either decide to reappoint him or decide to declare the position vacant and advertised. I believe that
Okay, I, I think I just got it, um, that we could place him with the, thank you for explaining that to, to me, Council, uh, Attorney Payton. So we will take item number, we'll take item number eighteen up at our next regular meeting, which will be the meeting after planning session. And that is to consider reappointment of, um, the sitting board member, Mr. Ma- Maurice Mohammed. Thank you, counselors. Item number nineteen, please.
Item nineteen, Restaurant Retail Liquor License Type Zero Two Zero for Logan's Roadhouse Two LLC located at five thousand Bond Boulevard, Bessemer, Alabama, three five oh two two.
Counselors, you have a copy of, um, that license in your, in your packet. Are there any questions and/or concerns?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If there's no questions, I move that the retail liquor, uh, type license zero two zero, uh, for Logan Roadhouse.
I need a second, please. It has been properly moved and seconded that we will approve the, uh, liquor license type zero two zero for Logan's Roadhouse LLC. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander. Aye. Counselor Collier.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries.
Thank you. Item number twenty, please.
Item twenty is the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program Two, but A Trip Two Award Letter to be read into the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you, um.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mayor Gully.
Um, yeah, so, uh, that would be, uh, no, no misunderstanding when it comes to, uh, whether, uh, when we receive, uh, grants, uh, I asked that, that the next two items be put and so on the, uh, agenda, and those items be read and stuff into the minutes. And I'm gonna ask and so Mr. Ron Gilbert and so to explain and so those items. Uh, in past meetings, individuals, uh, 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 said that they, that they weren't aware and so of, uh, uh, certain grants, the approval of certain grants, uh, and when certain grants, uh, were received, uh, what this is, is to rectify that and make sure and so that these ALDOT grants are actually, uh, in the minutes and so of the, the meeting after I receive those. And with that said, I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, Ms. Taylor and so to, uh, read those, uh, uh, those grants into the minutes, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Ron Gilbert and so to explain them to, uh, the city council and citizens and folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gully.
Okay, this is a grant from the state of Alabama Office of the Governor. It's dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, is to the Honorable Kenneth E. Gully, Mayor, City of Bessemer, seventeen hundred Third Avenue North, Bessemer, Alabama, three five oh two oh. Is regarding the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program Two, A Trip Two Award Letter. Dear Mayor Gully, the A Trip Two Committee has completed the fiscal year twenty twenty-one application review and competitive selection process. Your application for improvements on SR one fifty from CR fifty-two to Lake Shore Parkway was carefully considered as part of the process for the program. I am pleased to inform you that your project was awarded two million dollars in A Trip Two funds pursuant to the Rebuild Alabama Act. The committee received seventy-two applications requesting approximately eighty-five million dollars in A Trip Two funding. Your project were one of the twenty-seven projects to be awarded this fiscal year. Congratulations on a successful application from such a competitive field. Appropriate ALDOT representatives will be in contact with you concerning the next steps in administering this project. If you have any questions prior to that, please contact Brad Lindsey, ALDOT Local Transportation Engineer at three three four two four two two seven two eight. Once again, congratulations, and I look forward to your project's completion as we continue to rebuild Alabama's infrastructure. Sincerely, K. Abbe, Governor.
Ms. Taylor, do you want to read both of them, or do you want to read one and we vote on, is this, um, does this require a vote, counsel?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, I see on here where it say counsel's vote necessary.
No.
Um, Ms. Taylor, go ahead with twenty-two, please.
Okay, so item twenty-one. Now, there was item twenty-two, it's item twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a grant from the Alabama Department of Transportation. Is dated September tenth, twenty twenty, to the Honorable Kenneth E. Gully, Mayor of Bessemer, located seventeen hundred Third Avenue North, Bessemer, Alabama, three five oh two oh. Is regarding the Rebuild Alabama Act Annual Grant Program. Dear Mayor Gully, the application review and competitive pro- selection process has been completed for the Rebuild Alabama Act for ten million dollars annual grant program. The application the city of Bessemer submitted for the repair and remediation of Avenue I, SR one fifty bridge was evaluated and carefully considered for selection. I am pleased to inform you that your project was awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rebuild Alabama funds. There were two hundred and thirty-one applications submitted for the RAA annual grant program requesting approximately fifty-three million dollars in RAA funding. The city of Bessemer should be commended for submitting a successful application from such a competitive field. Appropriate ALDOT representatives will be in contact with you concerning the next step in administering this project. If you have any questions prior to that, please contact Bradley B. Lindsey, Acting ALDOT Local Transportation Engineer at three three four two four two two seven two eight. Congratulations, and I look forward to your project completion as we continue to rebuild Alabama infrastructures. Sincerely, John R. Cooper, Transportation Director.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Thank you, Mayor Gully. I think that's a wonderful, a wonderful thing to read those out into, uh, into record. But let me ask Mr. Gilbert a question from that. Mr. Gilbert, that is just for the Avenue I Bridge, not for Avenue I itself?
Yes, ma'am, that is, um, that is the bridge on Avenue, uh, Avenue I crossing State Route one fifty. It's for the repainting of that bridge. Uh, this was brought, uh, before council several months ago for y'all to approve the application, of course.
Do remember that. Thank you so much. Um, item number, any other counselor? Item number twenty-three, please.
Item twenty-two is the council, council members' comments, statements of motion.
Counselors, District One, please.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we want to ask the entire city as well as the entire council, mayor also, to pray for the Maxwell family, the Prince family who lost their loved one, also, uh, pray for the Cooper family who, uh, buried their mom on last week and keep council, I mean, keep State Representative Alex- Alexander in your prayers.
Thank you, Counselor, um.
And ask everything else to Terrain.
Thank you, sir. District Two.
Yes, thank you. Thank, thank you, thank you everybody for all the prayers for my mom. Also, I just wanted to address, uh, address three zero zero four Ninth Avenue North on the Bessemer Super Highway, um. Uh, Mayor Gully, can you get, uh, someone to go out and look? I think it's supposed to be an auto place, but they have so many junk cars and they're obscuring on Thirty First Street. You can't even go into the traffic on Ninth Avenue, um, coming off of Thirty First Street right there because they have so many cars parked alongside the highway as well.
Counselor Alexander, is that on the side with the, um?
With the motel across from the Dollar General.
Okay.
Madam President, um, uh, Counselor is down to real pass that on, such a cheap rope in the police department and so, and have them check on it.
Thank you.
District Four, please.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I would like to offer condolences to the Thomas Sadler family. The Sadlers were one of the original settlers of the area, and of course Sadler Cemetery off Hopewell Road is part of it, and I think his mother, before her death, lived on Sadler Town Road. But, um, Tom, Tommy, Thomas had a, a machine shop, competition engines right there on Ninth Avenue, um, just right past Highway one fifty. He's been there for a long time, and all the, all the racers know him, and those with performance engines know him. So, we lost a, a good one in the area, a citizen and a business owner. And I'll continue to send all my other information to the mayor's office.
District Five.
Madam President, um, let me just make this statement. Um, I'm disappointed that you allowed my name to be called. I have not issued any personal attacks or called anyone by name. Whatever Counselor Crusoe has done, God bless him for doing it. But you can't judge what I do. You, you don't live with me. You don't move with me. So to, to personally attack me, I think was, um, was, was, was a very rude thing to do. I would not dare call your name, okay, in a personal attack. And, Miss President, I think you should have taken care of that. I'll continue to send everything else to Terrain. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Marshall. District Six, please. Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, uh,
Can you take your phone down, please?
Oh, sorry about that. Um, yeah, I have some notes written on it, so that's what, sorry about that. Yes, ma'am. Um, I'd like to say too, uh, I heard what, uh, Pastor Casper said at his opening prayer concerning, uh, Fulton Dale and Center Point, them being our sister cities. Uh, well, on Sunday, Pastor Rogers at New Bessemer made an appeal to the church, uh, to, to help those cities. And in conjunction with that, I was thinking about it, and then I looked at my email, and I have an email from the Chamber of Commerce and neighbors helping neighbors. And I think that's a, a, a good gesture from the, the, the Bessemer Chamber of Commerce and the city of Bessemer to, uh, join forces and helping, uh, our neighboring cities because of the, the aftermath. If you haven't had the opportunity to see it, probably won't, in a, uh, you know, I've had the opportunity to go in because of, of, uh, work-related, uh, instances. So, um, in that regard, it's good to help people in the time of need. I know we had a problem when it came, it just hit our golf, golf course and then hit our homes and destroy, you know, our citizens and uproot them like it has those two cities. Because you never know what shape you're gonna be in, so, uh, my hat's off to, uh, both the Chamber and the city of Bessemer for putting forth efforts in helping, uh, uh, Fulton Dale and Center Point. Um, and thank the leadership of the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and this leadership, mayor, and our council members who I know will put forth effort in helping, uh, our neighboring cities out. So that's all on that note. Well, may I have two burn, three burning issues? One stemming from, uh, a couple of weeks ago, what I reported to you. And it's been sitting there since before Christmas. And that's though, those pole, that electric pole that's across the street from Green Isle Apartments, address one through six, or next to four sixty-two, Flint Hill Road. Now, we have enough paper thrown and everything in that area, and I reported this, uh, and it should be, Bessemer Utilities should have came out and picked this pole and the wire, aluminum. I mean, it's just, it just looks horrible coming into the community. Right on the side of the road, you got three sections of pole, a span of wire been laying there for over a month. I mean, it's, it's not acceptable, one, in the community. And it just looks doggone bad, just the time you come around the curve, there it is, a pole cut up with wire. I mean, that should have been picked up the next week after, after, at least in a week from the time that the car hit the pole, but it's still laying there. And it just looks bad. And, and when people come into your community, you, you want it to be presentable, but just pure negligence on behalf of, of Bessemer Utilities for not coming back, picking up the, the hardware and the pole is, is just, it's just ludicrous. And I'm just asking that that pole be picked up, uh, expeditiously, because it's been there since, since before Christmas, and it's just, that's unsightly. Let's look bad. And, uh, when you're getting on the interstate off of Ninth Avenue there to go on Alabama Adventure Park And when you're getting on the interstate off of Ninth Avenue there to go on Alabama Adventure Parkway, we have floodlights that's, that shines before you get to the interstate between Bessemer Highway and the interstate. Those lights been out for about six months, at a minimum. And it's just dark going from Bessemer Highway to the interstate, or if you're going around Alabama Adventure, you have some lights that is out. And this dumping on Eleventh Street, this the third and final one, this dumping of shingles from the street department, uh, when soon you pass the street department, they're on Fifteenth Avenue to the right. And I know I've said it once, but now, if that's gonna be, uh, uh, I guess, a landfill area for shingles, because you know, you go down Holmes Drive, they already packed that out where the homes used to live, back in there in that dead end. Uh, and if you go around the curb to the left, they gone in on that private property and also dumping. I mean, it's, it's just sad that we, uh, we continue to allow, uh, these property owners. One, they should have that gate closed. And somebody need to really take charge into, looking into these, this negligence, you know? And I know eight to ninety percent of, of our residential in, in, in my district, District Six, where I represent, is predominantly black. And it's, it's just bad for the communities to be in such a disarray and, and, and allowed to, we, we just don't. We just need better, better, uh, I guess, people who's supposed to be monitoring this stuff, need to be, pay close attention to it, you know? I mean, we got gas pumps down there, and I know they ride around and see this, at least I hope they do. If they see it, they're not reporting it or getting the employees to pick it up, or do something. I mean, it's, I mean, it's just sad. If you look right around this city and look at some of the things that I see, because I don't roll up no sidewalk, no time, I'm out there all the time, and it just looks bad. And probably if some of us who say that we care would put more initiative behind our talk, we'll have a, a better-looking city. It just looks bad. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Matthews. District seven, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first off, unapologetically, I don't do the subliminal. You know, if the truth hurts, you know, that, that's personal. Sometimes hurt helps. I want to District Seven, and for the City of Bessemer. Um, I have my prayers to go out to all of the ill and bereaved families throughout the City of Bessemer, because we have had countless deaths. Um, I know, President, I mean, there were numerous funerals that you had to attend in your district along with deaths throughout other districts throughout the city. And my heart goes out to all of the ill and bereaved families throughout the City of Bessemer and surrounding cities as, as well. Um, from, as to Mayor Gully, the scheduled trash and garbage pickups that I've requested numerous times, did we ever, were you ever able to provide that?
Counselor Crusoe, I have, I have the director sort of working on that. As soon as it's in my possession, I'll make sure you get a copy.
Yes, sir. Um, also, as far as, um, street lights, with whoever it is that's, job it is to patrol, patrol throughout the city, um, you know, and particularly District Seven, um, if, if they'll spend a little more time over in, in District Seven to identify all of these dark areas up and down Dartmouth Avenue. I mean, we've had, you know, we've had more than one fatality here on, on Dartmouth Avenue, right in the area where there aren't, I mean, little to no lights. And for this to be one of the main streets here in the City of Bessemer, it, it should be lit up. And I'm not downplaying any of the other streets, um, you, 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 um, adjacent or in other areas throughout the city. It may, it may, the City of Bessemer, for us to own our own utility company and to be as dark and hazy as the appearance of the city, it may, it's, it's somewhat, um, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't have a good reflection. Um, throughout District Seven, I've received numerous phone calls where I'm requesting more police patrol. And also, at your earliest convenience, Mayor, can we, we get an update of the status of dilapidated houses here in District Seven? I would greatly appreciate it, thanks, thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Crusoe. District Three, Counselor Crusoe has already elaborated on Dartmouth Avenue. And as I continue to peruse Facebook and look at the young lady who stated she had an accident, which ended up in a fatality, that she's having some problems with PTSD and other things. I would hope, Mayor Gully, that we can get out there and look at some ways that we can get some lighting up and down Dartmouth Avenue. And again, we can look at that traffic light there on Fairfax, I'm sorry, there on Dartmouth Avenue and Twenty Second Street. Dartmouth Avenue, along with Fairfax Avenue, has become the raceway of the South Side. The motorcycles, the new, the cars, those are the raceways of the South Side. I have already turned several things into your office, terrain, and Mr. Mr. Hatter's office. But I will say this, we've turned in Dartmouth Avenue, Thirty Second Street, Thirty Street, Fairfax Avenue, Twenty Second Street. Um, those are the hotspots for District Three and District Seven. If we can get somebody out to get that paper, especially on Dartmouth and Fairfax Avenue, we'll grace, greatly appreciate it. I have about thirteen more things, I will send them to the mayor's office. Thank you all, councilors, for such a wonderful meeting. And we pray for the sick and shed in, as well as our citizens all over this nation that is having to deal with COVID-19. I'm gonna call it one and two. I need a motion, Counselor Second, and roll call Ms. Taylor. To dismiss, to adjourn meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
Back.
Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Carter. Counselor Carter. Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall. Counselor Marshall. Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye, you all have a great week. Safe week.